Alarm that was sounded wasn't heated the first time. You know, there's unfortunately in the annals of trauma, there's always a second chance to redeem yourself.
Yeah. Joshua Cohen is translator, editor, overseer of a newly printed version of The Opermens by Leon Fuschwanger. Joshua Cohen, congratulations and thanks so much for the time.
Thank you very much.
You're listening to Here and Now.
Next time on The World, President Biden's trip to Mexico. He brought along his plan to relieve the migration crisis at the U.S. southern border. Some analysts say it will not be enough to solve the problem.
We can't just look at immigration reform in the United States without addressing why people continue to come to the U.S.
How the U.S. and Mexico will need to work together to fix an outdated immigration system, it's on The World.
You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is supported by American National Bank and Trust Company, serving local communities in Virginia and North Carolina. American National Bank and Trust Company, your hometown bank. More at AMNB.com.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And the Museum of Science in Boston, providing pre-K through grade 12 engineering curricula from We Engineer to Engineering the Future, with teacher guides, storybooks, kits, and videos, all designed to fuel dynamic STEM education. More at MOS.org.
It's Here and Now. There are more than 30 million people living with kidney disease in the U.S. and about 850 million around the world, and that's just the beginning. The American Society of Nephrology is warning those numbers will only grow because of extreme heat exposure and dehydration, which could trigger chronic kidney disease. It's already happening in Central America, in Asia, and to an alarming degree in Nepal, where in 2021, university researchers surveyed the country's nephrologists and found a correlation between men working abroad and increased risk of kidney disease. Jerry Shi is India bureau chief for The Washington Post. He's based in New Delhi but traveled to Nepal for this story. His is titled "The World's Torrid Future Is Etched in the Crippled Kidneys of Nepali Workers." A terrifying title, a terrifying story. We'll post it at hereandnow.org. Jerry, welcome.
Thanks very much, Robin.
Who are these workers? Where are they working?
Nepal is a landlocked country. It's small. It's in the Himalaya Mountains, wedged between India and China. It's also one of the world's poorest countries. And so for decades, the country's been sending its young men to far-flung countries to basically do physical labor. Malaysia is a popular destination. Many countries in the Persian Gulf, including Qatar, Kuwait, Saudi Arabia, these are the places that get tens of thousands of young Nepali men every year who go to do construction, to do farming, to work in steaming hot factories.
Well, and well, and we know in 1985, as you report, the government began regulating overseas employment, and that produced this private labor recruitment industry. It's called manpower agencies. So people are being recruited to go to these countries where the heat is so oppressive. Talk about, for instance, Saraj. This is a 28-year-old who went to work in Kuwait.
Sure. So I came across Saraj while I was in a kidney ward in southern Nepal. So to support his family, he had to go abroad. And the place that he chose to go to was Kuwait, where he was assembling windows. And after about six months, he was sent to the construction site, where he was out in 120-degree heat, sometimes dangling by a rope, installing these aluminum windows on skyscrapers. He often had to walk five floors just to get to the water tank. Sometimes the water ran out by lunchtime. And so after about a year, that gradually took its toll. And before he knew it, he came down with end-stage kidney failure.
Yeah. Kidney disease is so insidious, as you remind us. It may not show symptoms, so workers like Saraj, they're undiagnosed until it's an irreversible disease, and then they come back to an impoverished country, which now has to provide services like either dialysis or a new kidney, a kidney transplant. Talk about that.
Absolutely, Robin. And so I guess this is the most terrifying part of what researchers say is kind of this emerging epidemic, right? Bear in mind that it's not only in Nepal. There have been studies that have gradually come out in the last couple of years that show that farmworkers in Central America are cropping up with essentially mini epidemics of kidney disease. Workers in Thailand are showing signs. These are young, previously healthy men who are suddenly coming down with incurable kidney disease. And so a lot of researchers are warning that this is something coming down the horizon as we have hotter temperatures across the world, as we have more frequent and extreme heat waves, that this might be a really, really big issue that we need to be thinking about.
Well, these these young men in Nepal, they don't have, it's not like they have insurance or Medicare, you know, to pay for dialysis or to pay for kidney transplants. And so, as you write, they come home and they're sometimes ostracized. Other family members don't want to be looked at as a possible person to donate a kidney. We have two. You can live with one, but sometimes they don't want that pressure. Although you write about Saraj's sister, an angel, who considers it. But then you also came across...
To the 3 o'clock session of the County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to invite anyone who is willing to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would join me, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board is now returning to open session. The Board of Supervisors holds its annual organizational meeting earlier today at 2:00 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Prior to the regularly scheduled Board meeting, all Board members are present. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda. Are there any requests to postpone, add, or change? Board members, Mr. Kaywood, Mr. Lubek.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. C1 is resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Howard B. Hall, Chief of Police, upon his retirement after more than 10 years of service. Mr. Kaywood.
Afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Calling up Howard. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize and honor Chief Howard Hall today. In fact, in some way, seeing him like this reminds me of the first time I ran into Howard in street clothes in Purgar, and I had no idea who he was. Because if you think about it, every time I had seen him before, he was always wearing exactly the same outfit. So it is kind of neat to see him again, somewhat similar to that way. I was not actually a part of the county when Howard came to work for the county. He came just a few months before me, so I can't take any credit for recruiting him or selecting him. But he's worked for us for about 10 years after really a full career at Baltimore County, Maryland, where he served for 26 years. And I think that in the time that he's been at Roanoke County, he's developed a regional, a state, and really a national reputation as a chief of police. And it's really been our honor as a county to have been served by him for so long. And a couple of things that I think he's really well-regarded for and widely known for is just a real focus on the personnel of the department. He's worked tirelessly to improve particularly the pay and benefits of our police, which is some of which we're implementing now. And then he was also integral to the joint Criminal Justice Academy arrangement that we have now with the city of Roanoke, which I think has served us very well. Some other focal points were officer wellness. And then the thing that I first learned about when I came from Howard is really the whole idea of data-driven policing, where we're really using analytics to drive the deployment of officers throughout the county and how they serve the public. And then just a couple of other things to mention is, and I think this is always important when we're talking about our staff, is in addition to all the wonderful professional accomplishments that Howard's made in his tenure as police chief, he's just been outstanding to work with. He's somebody that we trust, that we really look up to in his field. And then, as you all know, that Howard was never remiss in expressing his forthright opinion on all kinds of different issues, and that was always really nice in a police chief.
Yes.
And before you guys talk a little bit more about Howard, because I will stand back up again, I also want to say a few things about Chuck. Of course, I always have to get a joke in at his expense, too. So Chuck has been in the process of retiring the whole time I've worked at the county, because when I first came, he was getting ready to retire. Apparently, he has finally gotten to that mark. But the thing I really want to say about Chuck is, for about three years before I held this job, public safety fell under me. So that often meant that I would get some concerning text, usually on Saturday, seemed to be when events would happen. And very often, the person sending me that text was Assistant Chief Mason. And I knew that when he was letting me know there was an event going on that I really needed to know, and he was excellent at keeping me informed, which helped me to keep the board informed. And I just always had this sense of confidence that if Chuck were on the case, so to speak, that everything was going to be fine, and we were going to know everything we needed to know. And I really appreciate, sometimes we would interact eight, 10, 12 times, you know, a few-hour period, but I just think his organizational skills, his knowledge of what it was like to be a cop on the street, and just how he handled all that was excellent. So I just want to, again, express my sincere appreciation of both Howard and Chuck. I'm going to miss them as colleagues and miss them as friends.
Excellent. So would Madam Clark please read the resolution?
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Howard B. Hall, Chief of Police, upon his retirement after more than 10 years of service. Whereas Howard B. Hall was employed by Roanoke County on August 12, 2012, and whereas Chief Hall retired on January 1, 2023, after 10 years and 5 months of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas Chief Hall received the Jay Standard Baker Award for Lifetime Achievement in Traffic Study in 2012, Chief Hall was accepted into the Evidence-Based Policing Hall of Fame in 2019. He was president of the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police in 2019 and 2020. He was the chairperson of the Washington-Baltimore HETA Executive Board in 2020. He was the president of the Blue Ridge Association of Chiefs of Police in 2019 and 2020. Chief Hall was chairperson of Roanoke VASAP Board of Directors 2019-2022. And whereas Chief Hall, through his employment with Roanoke County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Roanoke County. And whereas throughout Chief Hall's tenure with Roanoke County, he led the Roanoke County Police Department in accomplishing the construction of the Roanoke County Criminal Justice Academy, implementing data-driven, evidence-based approaches to police operations. Under Chief Hall's leadership, the Police Department collaborated with George Mason University's Center for Evidence-Based Crime Policy on two research projects related to response to persons in crisis. And the Police Department worked closely with Roanoke County Public Schools to enhance security prevention and response to school-based incidents. The Roanoke County Police Department implemented the Roanoke Regional Drug Unit as a part of the Washington-Baltimore High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. The Roanoke County Police Department enhanced officer safety and wellness through improved training, peer support, a Chaplain Program, and instituted annual wellness checks. Chief Hall was instrumental in the implementation of a step-pay plan for sworn personnel to enhance retention and provide a career-long compensation path. Under Chief Hall's direction, we made numerous enhancements to equipment and facilities, including a new substation, mobile command post, evidence/hostage negotiations vehicle, SWAT robot, and firearms range improvements. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses the deepest appreciation and the appreciation of all the citizens of Roanoke County to Howard B. Hall for more than 10 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
So I move that we approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Sure.
I even brought a few nuts, what do you know? Didn't see that coming, did you? Oh, I appreciate, you know, very, very kind remarks. I did a little math. In 10 years and 5 months, there have been 13 board members, four county administrators, and five assistant county administrators. And I've stood up here a few times with all of those and with all of you. I do appreciate the fact that when I stood here, you did listen to me. And actually, there were people that along the way, you know, commented that, you know, when you go up there, they pay attention. I'm not completely sure I gave you much of a choice. But in any event, I appreciate it. And Richard mentioned, you know, when I started here, I believe the only person left that was involved in that selection would be Mr. Mahoney, in his role as the county attorney. The rest of them, I suppose, I drove off. In any event, you know, the credit for all the things that Debbie just read off certainly doesn't go to me. It goes to the people that are sitting behind me and the rest of the people that work for the department. The chief's job, you know, is not to do the work every day. It's been a long time since I arrested somebody. It hasn't been so long for some of them. So, you know, the credit is shared. It takes an organization. And I think we've done, and I mean, we, by the Police Department and you and the administration, a really good job of setting the organization up for success. And I think at a high level, three things have really helped. One is, Richard mentioned, the data-driven and evidence-based practices. You know, we start to look at where police resources are needed and try to put the limited resources that we have in those places. And the evidence-based side is, when you put them there, let's have them doing something that has some return on investment, so that we have some results. You know, occasionally, that runs afoul of, you know, something that people might want or might be politically popular, but it's the right thing to do. Second, you know, I think we sort of shifted from an inward to an outward focus. We worked really hard with our communities, you know, both residential and business, with other county departments, with you, to get things done. Additionally, you know, we've looked outside of Roanoke County to others in our profession to find new ideas and good ideas that we've been able to bring back and use, and at the same time, exposed our people to those different ideas and to different places, which I think is incredibly valuable. When we talk about the people, and that's the third part, and maybe the biggest, you know, we've worked really hard, and I think successfully, to balance accountability and support. I've said that at every graduation that we've had in the last 10 years. We all have to be accountable, and when bad things happen and people make mistakes, we have to deal with that. But at the same time, I think we've done a good job of standing up and supporting the men and women of our police department. You know, when they've done the right things, that sometimes can be a little ugly, and that's incredibly important, and I'm really proud of the way that we've been able to do that. We've put a lot of work into career development. And I'm really pleased that my successor was chosen from within the department. I think that's part of a police chief's job, is to develop people. There's a bunch of other people sitting back there that have the potential to move up, and some of them are going to get a chance here shortly as some promotions play out. As Richard mentioned, safety and wellness, the last few years, we've put a lot of effort into trying to make sure that our officers are not just physically safe, but mentally well as well. You know, I think the goal is that when someone ends their career, you'd like to have them in basically the same shape as when they started, outside of those things that Mother Nature kind of has a say in. You know, and finally, as Richard mentioned, the compensation. We worked really hard, took a long time to get there, but we've got now what I think is an excellent compensation plan that will benefit this department for a long time. So I've retired, knowing that, you know, at least I believe we have accomplished the things I thought we needed to when I got here, and the things that came up while I was here that I thought we needed to do. And in today's world, I think there's very few police chiefs that can say that when they go out the door. So I'm really proud of what we've done. None of those things could be, had been done without your support and the support of the administration. So please continue to do that for Chief Poindexter and the rest of the department. In the meantime, Ann and I are going to continue to be Roanoke County residents, so if there's something that I or we can do to help or support, y'all know where to find me. And maybe if y'all are available Thursday evening, there's going to be a little get-together that might be a little bit less formal than today. Please feel free to join us. So thank you again. Thank you.
So board members, anyone care to have a few remarks? Mr. Norworth?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you since I came on the board. I've always been responsive when I've called on you and very professional, and I love the fact that you're data-driven, because the data is what it is. And I'm also a big supporter of data-driven analytics. And I just want you to know, the other night, I had a dream, and I woke up and I said, oh, no. And I dreamt you were going to the General Assembly to be a lobbyist for the state of Virginia law enforcement. So, you know, you never know what you're going to do after about six months.
They love me up there.
Yeah. We know they do. But they might love you more in plain clothes.
Maybe.
Anyone else? Mr. Peters?
Well, Chief Hall, a comment was made earlier about trust, and I think that's, when you say, when you would come before this board and speak, we had a lot of trust in you. We've, you know, I guess I'm the longest-serving board member up here, and I've been with you for, I'm starting my 10th year on the board. But during that time, I sent this to you in an email. You know, I was a newly, new chairman of the board, I think, in '16, and we had this Kante Spencer incident, and you were the steady hand that helped guide us through that. Fast forward a few years, and we had the chaos of, you know, around 2020 and the defunding the police and all of that stuff that went on. You helped steady through all of that. And you worked with us, because we did not, Roanoke County has never sided with the defund the police attitude, and we were there with your help, and we were asking, what can we do? We don't want to lose our officers. What can we do? And I'm proud to say that in 2021, I think that was the year I was chair, we did finally get through that pay plan that I hope will be a benefit to all of our officers for many years to come. It's been great to partner with you, and that's really what I believe, and we've had a great partnership. Now, I will say that I was always scared when I walked into a work session and I saw you and the chief of fire and rescue and the sheriff sitting there, because I knew it was going to cost me big money.
Never said we were chief.
And you've proven that to be true. So, but again, I appreciate your partnership. You've definitely left the department, I believe, in a better shape than what you founded, which is what all of us as leaders wanted to. And I have the full faith in your successor, Chief Poindexter. I've had the great honor of knowing him for a long time, and I know you've handed over a great department, and I wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
I've had no problem recognizing Howard in his civilian clothes, because I guess I've had the pleasure or the opportunity to see him at the gym.
I don't know if that's a pleasure or not.
I feel privileged in that I was one of a group of people on, I guess, a selection or interview team 10 and a half years ago, and our recommendation was to select you, and I think that was one of the best decisions Roanoke County's ever made. Your excellent leadership has helped move our police department to, I believe, one of the best in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Yes.
And I think your leadership didn't end there, but your role as president of the Virginia Association of Chiefs, and yes, you stepped on a few toes, but I think that message had to be delivered back in 19 and 20. And I think that's one of the attributes that we see in you and why you were so valuable. You told us the truth. You told us straight, very simple, very direct, and I think that helped us make some very difficult decisions. And I hope the decisions we made to support you and to support our police department have helped. But with that, I'm sorry you're retiring, but I hope you have an enjoyable retirement, and you and your wife can do cruises year-round. Thank you, Howard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bradford?
Yeah. Chief Hall, ditto every what everybody has said. You know, I hate to see you go. I'm probably having the least amount of time with you than everybody else, because I came on board in 2018, 2019. But when we first met, we were at that Christmas luncheon at the Civic Center, and you were really gracious and telling me a little bit about the police department. So here I am, a greenhorn on the board. So it was a good meeting, and I appreciate that. And just some of your comments about caring for your team, and it's a good example, because here's your team, they're right behind us, and I'm sure they hate to see you go, too. I like what you said about looking outwards, so to get different ideas and thoughts about how to do the department, and I think that's important. You have to always go out and look and see what other people are doing. You have to always go out and look and see what other people are doing to understand what's out there. And I'm glad we could get the pay plan that you authored and get it through, and, you know, I thought it was necessary to keep our county going forward. And I agree with Jason, you know, who would have thought in a million years that our country would try to defund the police? That is the most confounding thing that I could ever understand, but I am so glad that, you know, we had you there helping us get through that cycle. And, you know, I think things are trending upward now for that, for our country. But again, hate to see you leave. Y'all enjoy your retirement. You're always the chief, but today you get to walk out as Howard Hall. Thank you.
So, Chief, we appreciate all you've done, and this is just a sampling of our sentiment, but we wish you blessings in your retirement. So, let's go forward with some pictures.
All right. You all coming down?
Yeah. We can do it. Let's do it.
The one comment no one made is we need to be thinking about his wife now that he'll be home all the time.
I already asked him.
Oh, okay.
We're going to work through that.
Are you going to, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
You fooled me. It took me a while to pick you out of the audience. I'll work around you.
And then in that same, in that same train of thought, we're going to continue on with our next item, which is a resolution.
I think I have a roll in this, too.
Yeah, I think you do. Yes, you do. Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Ralph Charles Mason, Assistant Chief of Police upon his retirement after more than 48 years of service. Chief Hall?
So, you thought you were done. I am very pleased to be able to come back in my retired status to present the resolution for Chuck Mason. As Martha just said, 48 years, seven months. Which is an amazing accomplishment in any career, particularly so for law enforcement. It's virtually unheard of for someone in a law enforcement capacity to have the career that Chuck has had. So, I'm pretty sure that the date of his retirement, January 1st, he was probably also the longest-serving Roanoke County employee, at least at present. He started as a dispatcher in the sheriff's office in 1974, June of 1974, if I remember correctly, later becoming a deputy. He was one of the original members of the Roanoke County Police Department in 1990, and in fact, is the last remaining original member still working for the department, at least, you know, when he retired. So, when I became chief, Chuck was acting assistant chief, and I promoted him to assistant chief fully in 2013. So, we worked next to each other for my entire tenure as chief, and he was a vital part of many of the accomplishments that you've already heard about today. Our data-driven and evidence-based strategies, particularly the D-Dax model, our school safety, that little pipeline project that's been going on, Chuck's been an integral part of, certainly our strategic plans, the HIDA initiative, and many, many others. So, he has been an incredibly reliable and dependable assistant chief. He was invaluable to me and to the department, not just for the last 10 years during my tenure, but for 48 years and seven months. So, I can't think of anyone who is more deserving than the recognition that you're about to give him. So, thank you very much.
Madam Clark, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Ralph Charles Mason, Assistant Chief of Police, upon his retirement after more than 48 years of service. Whereas Chuck Mason was employed by Roanoke County on June 1st, 1974, and whereas Assistant Chief Mason retired on January 1, 2023, after 48 years and seven months of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas Assistant Chief Mason, who is employed with Roanoke County, has served as a dispatcher with the sheriff's office, June 1, 1974 through April 30, 1978, police officer in the sheriff's office, May 1, 1978 through February 29, 1984, deputy sheriff corporal in the sheriff's office, March 1, 1984 through April 19, 1985, deputy sheriff, criminal investigator sheriff's office, April 20, 1985 through June 8, 1990, deputy sheriff, June 9, 1990 through June 30, 1990, sergeant police officer, sergeant police, July 1, 1990 through March 15, 2002, police officer lieutenant in uniform in the police department, March 16, 2002 through August 29, 2003, and August 30, 2003 through March 31, 2013, acting chief of police, November 1, 2011 through March 31, 2013, and assistant chief of police, March 31, 2013, until his retirement, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Roanoke County. And whereas Assistant Chief Mason's tenure with Roanoke County, he investigated major narcotics cases and complex criminal investigations. He was later tasked with expanding the narcotics unit as the vice narcotics sergeant. He oversaw the expansion of Roanoke County's K-9 program, both as a sergeant and later as assistant chief. Assistant Chief Mason was the lieutenant assigned to the criminal investigation unit for eight years. During this time, he oversaw homicide, sexual assault, robbery, and various other major investigations, including a homicide of missing juvenile case that traversed the entire county in 2010. He was an academy instructor, and he was an adjunct professor at both Fairham College and Radford University. Assistant Chief Mason's longstanding and well-developed knowledge in the area of police work, especially in complex investigations over the past 48 years, has been a great asset to our officers and citizens. More recently, Assistant Chief Mason oversaw the development of the field force program as well as developing the law enforcement response to matters involving the Mountain Valley Pipeline. Assistant Chief Mason was the operations assistant chief and oversaw the implementation of the chief's data-driven approaches to crime and safety initiative, before more recently taking over as the administrative assistant chief and overseeing the budget professional standards unit and services division. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Ralph Chuck Mason for more than 48 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Little Clark, please call the roll.
Let me take a breath first. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you very much. So, would you like to say anything before I go on to board comments?
Just very briefly, it's been an indescribable honor to be able to serve the county for almost a half a century. It's been a pleasure working with the county. I've loved every second of it. I am very proud, as you might imagine, of the police department as it's become. I am enormously proud of the folks that work there. That's the hardest part about leaving is not being able to work with them anymore. These are remarkably good people. They work hard at protecting the county. They work very hard at protecting the county. I hope you guys, in as much as you can, can continue to look out for them.
Thank you. Board members, any comment? Mr. North?
Yeah. You know, like I told Chief Hall, or Howard Hall now, but he'll always be chief to me, that in about six months, there'll something come along and you'll get involved in it. You know, what they do in Chesterfield County, I learned from one of the supervisors last summer over in Richmond and Vaco, was that they invite their retirees back to do some work, whether it's at the firing range or what have you. So, who knows? You might get a phone call one day and you can go back and help out a little bit. And by the way, they pay you a little bit for that, too. Don't think it's free.
That's even better.
So, that's even better. But I just want to say that anybody that works anywhere for 48 years is remarkable. I mean, I came from the railroad where people worked 45 years, 41 years, 39, 37, and I worked 39, and I thought that was a long time. So, kudos to you for working so long and representing Roanoke County so well. Congratulations.
Mr. Peters?
So, Mr. Mahoney and I were just up here chatting that, you know, with you and Chief Hall now being retired, we do have some positions open for SROs. I just want to throw that out there, okay? I'll give her about six months after you retire. All right. Anyway, Chuck, you know, again, we appreciate everything you've done with the department. And I'll say this, I've known a lot of dispatchers and people who worked in the office part of the police department, and they've always spoke very highly of you because they say he always calls me by name, and he always knows what's going on in my world. You'll ask about their family or their mom or whatever's happened, and they said, you know, it just, it always made them feel good to be a part of the department and the personal service that you gave to the people, even in the office piece. But I think it speaks to your testimony for all the people out in the field that I've talked to through the years who have spoke very highly of you. And, you know, you've had a great reputation. Again, we will continue to service, or to serve our police department and take care of them. I can assure you of that. And I, again, hope that you have a wonderful retirement.
Mr. Mahoney?
Chuck, I guess for me, since I happen to be one of a group of people who were involved in the creation of the police department back many, many, many years ago, that was difficult, but at the same time, it was sort of the easy part. It was men and women like you who were willing enough and courageous enough to make that transition from the sheriff's department to the police department to help lay the foundation for the creation of the police department in Roanoke County. And I guess I want to salute you for your work in making that transition a success because, like I say, you were one of the people that helped make that a success. And those were, those were difficult times. I think we all, many of us who were around remember that. I guess so in my memory, that's why I'm so thankful for you and your service and the fact that, oh my gosh, 48 years, that's tremendous. And as Howard said, people in your profession, unfortunately, can't make it that long. But to you, you know, your leadership for us, the citizens of Roanoke County, has been tremendous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradford?
Yeah. And assistant chief, you know, I just thank the Lord for keeping you healthy and safe for all these years to be and work with the force. After hearing that resolution, you've done a lot, really a whole lot, that has really benefited the county, the citizens of Roanoke County. And that's a hard, hard person to fill. They're just not out there. It has to grow over time. You're a good leader, and you set good examples, and hopefully, a lot of those patterns that you did have made an impression upon all these officers that you have behind us. But thank you again. 48 years is incredible. I hope I could do that where I work one day. But thank you and have a blessed retirement.
Thank you, sir.
So, Chuck, we just want to wish you well, wish you Godspeed in your retirement. You deserve it, and so we wish you many prosperous years in that capacity. Let's take some pictures. Do you want to come back down again?
They don't want to stay and listen to us rest in peace.
They're done now. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
That was the fun part of the job.
That was the fun part.
Here comes the sad part.
So, we will move on, and we are now on de-briefings, briefing to discuss with the Board of Supervisors, the 2023 real estate assessment. Kenneth Fay, Director of Real Estate. Welcome, Mr. Fay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm here to discuss the 2023 real estate assessment. There are positives for Roanoke County. The economy is growing, and the assessments are stronger than it's been in several years. While this is a positive, it is important to understand that the pandemic and economic recovery are an anomaly, and economists predict these trends will not continue at present levels in future years. Before I give you some background on our general reassessment, I'd like to take this opportunity and recognize our appraisal staff. We have eight appraisers and three support staff that are responsible for appraising over 47,000 parcels with a total market value of over $11 billion. Given the volatile real estate market of the last couple of years, the appraisal staff has done a commendable job. So, a little background, we assess all properties every year with an effective date of January 1. After the briefing today, a reassessment notice will be mailed to all properties that have a change of value. Code of Virginia requires all real estate to be assessed at 100% of fair market value. Our appraisal staff is responsible for identifying, locating, estimating the value of all properties within the county for tax purposes. It is the citizens who buy and sell real estate in the open market that establish values by how much they are willing to offer and accept for individual properties. Our staff evaluates these transactions and value properties equitably with similar surrounding properties. Differences exist between individual properties and between neighborhoods across the county. Real estate values have increased significantly at the local, regional, and national levels, mainly due to limited supply and favorable mortgage rates. The changes for the 2023 assessment are broken down here by category, including residential, commercial, market, and new construction. The overall percentage change is the increase of 10.59%. The residential portion is 11.61. This is a county-wide average. There are several neighborhoods throughout the county that experience even higher increases. The bottom portion of the slide shows what changes are attributed to market differences as well as new construction. The bottom portion of the slide shows what changes are attributed to market differences as well as new construction. And the market value residential represented the largest portion of change at 90.73%. Here we see assessment growth in the last 10 years. The real estate market bottomed out in 2013, um, following the real estate crisis of the early 2000s. The overall assessment was driven by new construction in the years 2015 and 2017. And in the last five years, increases in assessments have driven, uh, has been driven by sales and a strong real estate market, as new construction, uh, has remained steady. As we look to the future, reassessments will revert, uh, back to about 2 to 3 and 1/2% of stable growth. In the last 10 years, assessments compared to inflation, uh, growth, assessment growth was below inflation during the housing downturn, uh, in line with inflation with a steady increase from 2016 to 2018. And both inflation and assessments have accelerated in the most recent couple of years. The median sales price is the middle point where there are as many sales below the median as there are above. Going back 10 years, there were only minimal changes in the median value up until the past couple of years, where we have seen more significant increases. The current median sales price averages, uh, 299,000. Here we have residential sales grouped by $100,000 increments. Lower interest rates have fueled the demand for higher-priced homes. The pandemic has increased demand for larger homes with office space and in-home entertainment. It is also worth mentioning that increase in market values have pushed home prices into higher categories. The history of residential sales, um, the number of qualified arms-length market, um, sales per year shown during the last 10 years, uh, the numbers have slowed recently. The number of qualified sales at this time last year was 1,446. We stand now, as of November 9th, at 1,161. The number of sales have decreased this year due to mortgage, uh, higher increased mortgage rates, limited supply of available homes, and affordability, um, issues as values increase. Included here is a number of foreclosures, and you can see the number of foreclosures have continued to decrease. Most of that is influenced by the forbearance programs created as a result of relief during the pandemic. Now that many of the forbearance programs have ended, foreclosure rates have remained low. This is mainly due to the large amount of equity that homeowners are experiencing also as a value, as a cause of value growth. While we saw growth in both residential and commercial real estate assessments, the majority of total assessment growth is attributable, attributable to growth in residential assessments, particularly in the single-family residential sector. The pie chart here shows an assessment comparison from 2013 to 2023. The county has maintained similar percentage proportions in residential, commercial, and multifamily parcels or properties over the past 10 years. Even though the majority of the assessment increase was due to market growth in residential real estate, Roanoke County continues to see growth, strong growth in new construction. This chart shows our new construction history over the past 10 years. I will note that the data for 2022 is, is as of November 9th, so we will have additional new construction by year's end. While the county did see some new construction in commercial real estate in 2022, there is commercial development ongoing that has not been issued a certificate of occupancy and thus not included in the 2023 reassessment. Commercial new construction is often more complex, and projects are larger, sometimes spanning multiple years, which leads to some fluctuations from year to year. In this 10-year comparison, there are similar new construction percentages. There were no new multifamily parcels that were completed within the year of 2013. More recently, there's been a significantly higher number of new construction multifamily par, uh, properties. Now, looking ahead to next year, um, some important things to look at are, um, local and national real estate markets continue to perform strongly due to limited supply of housing and strong employment numbers. The Federal Reserve has continued to increase interest rates. Real estate markets are slowing in terms of volume of sales due to increased interest rates. Later today on the board's agenda is a work session, which will include additional information on the fiscal impact of the 2023 Real Estate Assessment. The 2023 assessment hearing dates, um, the notices are mailed out today. Citizens will start receiving them tomorrow. Informal appeals begin on the 17th of January, run through January 25th. The formal appeals for the Board of Equalizations are three dates. They're the 27th of April, July 27th, and October 6th. And the final deadline to apply for an appeal is September 9th, 2023. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. And board members, questions? Mr. North?
Mr. Fay, I've noticed the informal appeals run from the 17th of January to the 25th. Is that set by county ordinance?
The, the appeals? Yes.
Reason I ask, Mr. Fay, is because the mail is notoriously terrible. So when you mail something on the 17th, some people may not get it to the 29th or 30th. So with that said, how are we going to handle those folks?
Yeah, it's 15 days is the, uh, from the mailing of the notice to, um, have a formal appeals. Our last day is the 25th, so it falls within the 15-day requirement.
Is that by county code, Mr. Lubeck?
It is by the Code of Virginia, sir.
The Code of Virginia. Okay, thank you. Well, I certainly hope if someone gets it late the mail and it was postmarked, that we should give them due consideration because you know there's always going to be somebody who doesn't get the mail out of the mailbox, or the mail fails and doesn't get there for quite a while. We received a letter the other day, it then took two weeks to get here. So those things are problematic, and they are exceptions, hopefully to the rule. But I just wanted to ask that question because I know that it could be raised by some citizens. Thank you.
If they should miss the formal appeals process, there's always a Board of Equalization process as well. So there's still recourse.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Mahoney?
Two questions. First question, I guess procedural. Have we, have we appointed all our Board of Equalization members? I can't. I can't recall. I know in the past, we've, we've made a recommendation to the Circuit Court judges.
Oh, yeah.
Have we done that?
I think, I think there's two alternates. I think we've got enough that there's two alternates. Is that correct?
Yeah. Um, the, all the Board of Equalization members that were last year, it's an annual appointment, have all agreed to go aboard this year.
Good.
And we have, um, um, one alternate, and we're still seeking out a second alternate.
The second question is, uh, I, I know historically, Roanoke County has been, um, at about 90% of fair market value in our assessments, based upon, uh, I think the Commonwealth of Virginia comes in and does, uh, an analysis of, of what we've done and compares us to their data. Do you know when, when does, when does the Commonwealth come in and look at us? And, and secondly, do you have a, an estimate or a guess of where we might fall?
Yeah, our, our median sales ratio is falling at 90.5 this year.
Okay.
The most recent, um, Department of Taxation Ratio Study is three years back. It's, um, the, uh, in March of '22, they came out with their, um, study for the 21, 2021 year, which was based on 2020 sales. So that goes back, um, three years. But we're consistently, um, um, around 90%, you know, low 90s. The state of, uh, Virginia is 100% market value state. There's certain parameters set by, for instance, the IAAO, which is recognized by the, um, state of Virginia. Standards are 90 to 100, so we're kind of at that low end of the spectrum, um, as far as the median ratio. All the other standards, COD, you know, we're typically ranked highest, um, or best, I should say, in the state because highest isn't always best. But our, our coefficient of, um, COD coefficient, coefficient of dispersion is about 6.75%, which is...
Thank you. I, I just know that, I think some of these assessments may be a, a surprise to some of our citizens. But again, um, when you look at that kind of data and that kind of information, we're really only 90% of what the true fair market value is. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah. Mr. Fay, um, so you drive a lot of your, your reassessments with comps, right?
Yeah. We, we look at all the sales. We start off in, in the beginning of the year doing a base study analysis where we're taking, or base rate analysis where we take, um, sales that occurred at the end of the previous year up to the beginning of the year. Once we set that rate, um, based on early year sales, then we go ahead and we look at each individual neighborhood. And the sales that occur in those neighborhoods, comparables or sales that occur, is how we come up with our ratio studies. Whatever those sales are, um, and ratio to their assessments is how we determine what the, the assessment should go, whether it go up, down, or, or, or stay the same. And so we do look at, uh, neighborhoods to really determine the val, the end value.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that question, we've, we've just gone through a, uh, what I call a hyper season of sales, uh, up until October of this past year. It was a seller's market. Now we're buyer's market, so whichever one. Anyway, the, you would list a house on Friday. You would have to deal with, people in Roanoke across the nation would have to deal with 10 to 15 contracts and then make a decision on Sunday. And they were so far above the listing price, it, sometimes it was quite a bit more. So how do you adjust for that, that increased sales? And now we're on the decline. We, as soon as we hit October, now we're going back down. We've got a lot of factors that are affecting that. So I'm, I'm just making sure our, our citizens understand, you know, that there's a bubble right there, but we're doing comps that are more level. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we, we look at, um, sales that occur right up until the point that we stop our assessment for the year. And the sales toward the end of the year are the biggest, best indicators of market value for our assessments. If, if values go down, then we simply reflect that in our assessments. Now, we only have one effective date each year, that's January 1. So anything that starts to occur at this point, and should there be a change, whether it be down or up, then those sales that occur after January 1 will be used or included in our analysis for January 1, uh, for the 2024 year, back to January 1.
So people that might be coming in, uh, to talk to you about the rates, or, or you're talking about last year's rates or values, but they're actually seeing a decline. I know houses, uh, were on the market for less than three days up until October. And now they're sitting on the market for two or three months. So there's a big decline now between now and January 1.
Yeah. According to the Realtor, Realtor Association, um, the middle of the year, it was about 24 days on market on average. I know there were homes that we saw go, um, the next day. And, um, during the busiest time, I would say the most, um, activity, uh, June, July, August, anything that was more than one day actually was a result of a bidding war.
Yeah.
And they, they kept the house active just to get the highest, you know?
Right.
But, but it wasn't uncommon at all to have a sale or an offer accepted the day that the property was listed. I looked in the last part of the year, which is, you know, December, I looked at December and up until today, January 10th, and the average days on market has gone at 54. So it's a little more than doubled what it was when the heat... But we, we do look at all that. We look at all factors to determine our values.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Fay. Appreciate that information. I'm sure we'll be chewing on it for a while. Next item is E, first reading of ordinances. Ordinance accepting and appropriating federal lands access program funds in the amount of $800,000 from the Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division of the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration for the Roanoke River Greenway from the Blue Ridge Parkway to Explore Park, Vinton Magisterial District. Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The federal lands access program was created by the Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century Act, continued in the Fixing America Service Transportation Act of 2015, and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law of 2022 to improve state and local transportation facilities that provide access to and through federal lands. The Roanoke River Greenway is envisioned as a backbone of the Roanoke Valley Greenway system and has been designated as a top greenway priority by the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission in the 1995, 2007, and 2018 Roanoke Valley Greenway plans, all adopted by the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors. The Roanoke County 2016 Community Strategic Plan also identifies greenways as a high-priority strategic initiative for supporting a multimodal transportation network and keeping Roanoke County healthy, clean, and beautiful. The 2022 County of Roanoke Strategic Planning Document supports continuing construction of the Roanoke River Greenway in the outdoor recreation strategic target outcome area. The Roanoke River Greenway is currently and will continue to be designed as a 10-foot-wide paved path, meeting the ADA standards. The 100% approved design plans for this project include an approximately 1.8-mile section of the greenway from the 3,400 block of Highland Road near the intersection with Ruchoff Road, through property owned by the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority, connecting to a federal overlook, passing underneath the Roanoke River Parkway, crossing properties owned by the National Park Service and ending at Explore Park. A trailhead parking lot is proposed to be constructed at 3,404 Ruchoff Road with access on Ruchoff Road. The project began in April 2015 when Roanoke County submitted an application for FLAPP funding, which was awarded in July 2016. Preliminary engineering began in 2018, followed by the donation of easements in 2020 from the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority and from the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority. In October 2022, the Blue Ridge Parkway executed a general agreement for the greenway, which allows construction of the greenway on federal land. An updated construction estimate identified a funding deficit earlier in 2022, resulting in this request for supplemental FLAPP funding. The Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division of the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, awarded Roanoke County supplemental funding in the amount of $1 million, inclusive, inclusive of local match, matching funds from the FLAPP in November 2022. VDOT has provided an updated Appendix A agreement, which reflects the supplemental funding. Once the Board of Supervisors accepts and appropriates the additional funding, the Appendix A can be executed with VDOT. Project design is concluding, and construction advertisement is anticipated by May 29th, 2023. Staff plan to advertise and construct this greenway segment with the adjacent greenway segment to the north along Highland Road that crosses under the Blue Ridge Parkway. The federal share of the funding is 80%, or $800,000. A local match of 20% or $200,000 is included in the proposed fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program. Previous FLAPP funding in the amount of $1,733,750 was accepted and appropriated by the Board of Supervisors on February 28th, 2017. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors accept and appropriate the supplemental FLAPP funding award in the amount of $800,000. The second reading is scheduled for January 24th, 2023. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for January 24th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve item E1, second.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Next item is ordinance accepting and appropriating transfer...
transportation alternative set aside program grant funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation in the amount of seventy thousand one hundred fourteen dollars for the East Roanoke River Greenway crossing of the Blue Ridge Parkway along Highland Road, State Route six eighteen, Vinton Magisterial District. Ms. Cronice, again.
Thank you. The transportation alternative set aside program provides eighty percent federal funding with a required twenty percent local match for improvements to non-motorized transportation that enhance the public's traveling experience, revitalize communities, and improve the quality of life. The proposed greenway will provide an accessible, third of a mile long, ten-foot wide, eight to ten-foot wide paved shared use path along the north side of Highland Road. The greenway will cross underneath the Blue Ridge Parkway through an existing overpass. The western terminus of the project will connect to a trailhead currently under construction at thirty-two oh four Highland Road that is owned by the Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority and leased by Roanoke County for Explore Park. The eastern terminus of the project will connect to a proposed trailhead on land that is owned by the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority. The proposed on-road alignment is supported in the Roanoke Valley Blue Ridge Parkway Trail Plan approved in twenty fifteen with a finding of no significant impact in the environmental assessment. This project began with conceptual planning and preliminary engineering between twenty twelve and twenty seventeen. Roanoke County requested transportation alternatives funding in November twenty seventeen, which was awarded in June twenty eighteen. Since that time, additional construction funding was requested in twenty nineteen and awarded in twenty twenty. The Virginia Recreational Facilities Authority donated easements in twenty twenty, and the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority donated easements in twenty twenty-one. In October twenty twenty-two, the Blue Ridge Parkway executed a general agreement for the greenway, which allows construction of the greenway on federal land. An updated construction estimate identified a funding deficit earlier in twenty twenty-two, resulting in this request for additional TA funding. Following the additional TA set aside funding awarded by the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization and VDOT's receipt of a request to extend the original TA set aside funding by one year, VDOT issued a second revised Appendix A. Once the Board of Supervisors accepts and appropriates the additional funding, the Appendix A can be executed with VDOT. Project design is concluding and construction advertisement is anticipated by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Staff plan to advertise and construct this greenway segment with the adjacent greenway segment mentioned earlier to the south between the Blue Ridge Parkway and Explore Park. The TA program provides eighty percent funding, or seventy thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. Required twenty percent local match total seventeen thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and is available in the VDOT revenue sharing project account. The Board of Supervisors have accepted and appropriated two other rounds of funding for this project in fiscal years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and in fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The TA set aside funds on the project total six hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. The local match funds on the project total one hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. Additional local funds on the project reflect the difference between the most recent construction estimate and the available funding for the project. Depending upon construction bids received, this funding may or may not be needed for the project. Aggregate allocations on the project total eight hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors accept and appropriate the additional seventy thousand one hundred fourteen dollars in TA set aside program funding from VDOT and schedule the second reading for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. I'll be happy to answer questions at this time.
If there are no questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item E two, second.
And with the clerk, please call the role.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Megan. So item F, public hearing and second reading of ordinances, the petition of Panda Storage, Rentals, and Sales to obtain a special use permit for equipment sales and rentals, and a special use permit for mini warehouse on approximately four point eight two acres on land zone C two, high intensity commercial district, located in the fifty-three hundred block of West Main Street and the fifty-four hundred block of Pleasant Run Drive, Catawba Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson, Director of Planning, welcome.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. So the request you have tonight, today, or this afternoon, it's one project, two special use permits, which is usually, you don't get to see. So talk a little bit about the property. Property's in the western part of Roanoke County along Route eleven four sixty, between Glenver and Dixie Caverns, next to Boone Tractor. Has frontage on both eleven four sixty, as well as Pleasant Run Drive. As is mentioned, it's in the fifty-three hundred block of West Main Street and the fifty-four hundred block of Pleasant Run Drive. A little under five acres at four point eight two acres. Currently, it's vacant. It's a grass lot with some trees on the back portion of the property. And they are proposing a special use permit for both equipment sales and rental, and also for mini warehouse. Couple photos. Let's kind of the frontage looking at along force eleven four sixty. Looking at the Boone Tractor site off in the distance. It's kind of looking from the road, looking back towards Pleasant Run. So this is from eleven four sixty, looking back that direction. You can see some of the homes in the background. It's kind of along the western property line, or yeah, western property line. There are some trees along it. This is from Pleasant Run Drive, looking back towards eleven four sixty. You can see some of the trees that are on the back part of that property. And this is kind of looking down one way on Pleasant Run and looking at the backside of the Boone Tractor property. This is kind of where the store water management facility is shown on their concept plan. And then looking the other direction down Pleasant Run Drive. You can see several houses in the background. So there's any ordinance identifies equipment sales and rental as establishments primarily engaged in sale or rental tools, trucks, tractors, construction equipment, agricultural implements, and similar industrial equipment in the rental of mobile homes. So it is not a by right use in C two. It is a special use in the C two. Mini warehouse is a building designed to provide rental storage space and cubicles, where each cubicle has a maximum floor area of four hundred square feet. These cubicles shall be enclosed for the loading and unloading of stored goods. Again, it is a special use permit in the C two district. Their concept plan, that's in the application, shows a shop office building near eleven four sixty, six thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. They are, are proposing two entrances, one off eleven four sixty, one off the Pleasant Run Drive. They all have onsite stores, containers, and RV boat and truck parking area. So that's kind of the component that makes up the mini warehouse. And if you look at that, and you see the yellow lines, that's the component that would make up the mini warehouse component, the special use permit. They do have sixty spaces for steel shipping containers, which would allow, they intend to stack those at maximum, just too high. So that would, the maximum amount that would ever be on the site was one hundred and twenty. As I mentioned, the store water management facilities along Pleasant Run Drive, near the Boone, it's property with Boone Tractor. And it's intended that the property would be fencing gated for that use. So the equipment sales and rental would be that portion kind of in the middle and to the rear of the property. So outdoor onsite storage, which was going to be containers with a garage element as part of that. That's what the mini warehouse storage units would look like onsite. Storage containers would look similar to these. That would be for sale or for rent by businesses. So there's just a couple of photos of those. One thing, where C two abuts R one, we require a type C buffer. You know, with our buffers, there's always two different options. One is a larger width buffer without fencing. And the other one is a smaller buffer that does include a six-foot screening associated with that. I think they're going to use option two along the western property line, where C two and R one. But as far as, again, the logistic zoning is C two. To the north across interstate, it's R one. To the east is C two, which is high intensity commercial. To the west, there's C two and R one, which is low density residential. And then to the south is also low density residential as far as zoning is concerned. Mapping as far as future land use. Ninety-nine percent is probably core. It's probably a hundred percent for mapping, but we did want to show that there is a little bit of neighborhood conservation. Core is our highest intensity commercial use. So it is in performance with that land use. Obviously, neighborhood conservation is for the continuing development pattern of established single-family neighborhoods. It wouldn't be with that. But again, I think it's, majority of the site is not poor. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this land use application on December twentieth. There were six citizens who spoke. They had a variety of concerns that they raised during that meeting. Traffic safety, both on eleven four sixty and Pleasant Run Drive. Concerns over drainage and store water management were raised. You know, questions about why wouldn't they locate these uses in industrial park? That those uses, that the uses being proposed are not appropriate for a residential area. Concern about truck traffic, especially on Pleasant Run Drive. They're concerned about the condition of that road and additional traffic, truck traffic on that road. Concerns with noise, dust, and lighting. Also, that raised some questions about the fencing and the buffers that would be established, what with hours of operation, and then the impact to the neighborhood. Planning Commission discussed existing surrounding land uses in the core future land use designation, the equipment that would be used on site with the applicant, the noise and lighting. Also discussed the buffers and fencing being proposed. Access route eleven four sixty and Pleasant Run Drive. They talked about stormwater and how it would be controlled by stormwater management regulations. They talked about the hours of operation, the aisle width in traffic circulation onsite, as well as, as well as truck traffic. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval of both special use permits. The first one with the equipment sales and rental, they would have, they recommended approval with four conditions. The first one dealing with performance with the concept plan. The second one dealing with onsite storage. Containers should not be stacked more than two containers high, which would not exceed twenty feet in height. The site shall be secured at all times by premier fencing, and that the only twenty-four hour access to the site shall be by the entrance drive off eleven four sixty, as shown on the concept plan. The same conditions for special use permit for the mini warehouse, being performance with the concept plan. And the site shall be secured at all times by premier fencing. And then the only twenty-four access to the site would be by the eleven four sixty access, as shown on the concept plan. So two special use permits, four conditions on the equipment sales and rental, three conditions on the mini warehouse. With that, any questions you have?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I have just a couple of questions, and it's regarding the general standards that I was reading through prior in preparation for this meeting. And I have a quick question regarding the buffer. Buffer's intent is to help protect any adjoining owner from what may be going on on that parcel. And when I was reading, let's see, ten-foot planting strip shall be provided adjacent to any public street wide of way on the backside of the property. I'm just curious of how this can be used to help mitigate the visibility for the neighbors behind Panda Storage and Rental. And I'm concerned that that thirty-foot buffer may not be adequate, and I'd like to hear your input.
Yes, there's some conversation about that during the Planning Commission hearing. Obviously, between C two, so there's different buffers, right? So there's a different buffer along the frontage. So there's a ten-foot buffer that's between eleven four sixty. They'll be planted along it. There'll be a ten-foot buffer along Pleasant Run Drive. And then there's the thirty-foot buffer that's being proposed where the C two and R one abut, which is on the western side.
Right.
Property line. Again, it has vegetation associated with that, which was shown again, there's trees that are planted to thirty-foot width. There's typically a six-foot screening associated with that. Again, with stacking, obviously, of the containers of twenty feet, that might be higher than what a six-foot screen would allow for initially. Obviously, with a special use permit, and we reiterated this to the Planning Commission, in the approval process, the Planning Commission can recommend and the board can adopt conditions to mitigate any impacts. And so, again, in the past, there have been other things to upscale buffer requirements if the board deemed necessary. And you do have the option, but that's our general standard, is a six-foot buffer between C two and R one. It could be a thirty or forty-foot buffer. Plantings of the large evergreen trees or deciduous trees are six-foot at planting. Obviously, they would grow over time. But from initially, it's obviously talking about, the six-foot screening probably would help the most, would be my guess, versus the plantings initially.
I had a couple of other questions, but I think I'm going to go on to other board members, and then I'll come back. Yes, Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when you have large in your presentation, that's six-foot trees?
Six-foot plant, when you install them, according to our landscaping ordinance, they're six-foot at planting.
Okay. And so you stack the containers up to twenty. Actually, they're eight-foot each, so it's sixteen. So it's going to take a tree to grow one foot a year for ten years before it covers up the view shed in the buffer area.
And I'll let the applicant speak to the, you know, they show sixty spaces, up to one hundred and twenty. I think he'll talk about how it will roll out, right? It's not going to be one twenty immediately, right? As far as containers. And again, I'll let them speak to that. But the intent is that they would buy what is needed to keep on site. They're not going to keep ones they can't rent or sell, right? So I think one twenty is the ultimate number that could ever be. And whether it would ever get to that amount is, I'll let them speak to that. They could explain how they plan on rolling it out. So the need to stack initially, I don't know how long it will take before they will want to stack them. Again, I'll let them speak to that from a business operation standpoint. But yes, it will take some time for trees to grow to an adequate height to screen that.
And when you use the term evergreen, tell me what's your definition of evergreen is?
Well, evergreen is a tree that doesn't lose its leaves, right? So deciduous will lose their leaves portion, during a portion of the year. So evergreen is always green. So Leland cypress, white pine, those are the type of evergreen trees that typically are used by most developers when we require evergreen plantings.
So Leland cypress is, I'm familiar with those. And they can be much larger than six feet when they're first planted, too.
Yeah, they typically grow fairly fast.
Yeah.
For an evergreen tree.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, I want to thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Maybe this is a question for the applicant, but who are the principal individuals involved in the application? I may be wrong, and I may be confusing this with another individual, but it's my recollection that in the past, the county has had some zoning enforcement issues with Krause individuals. And so I guess I'm a little suspicious of compliance with many of the conditions and how those conditions would be enforced in the future. So do we know who is Panda and who is, who's going to be running this operation?
All of them, introduce themselves that are here to speak.
Okay. And talk to me about how we can restrict or limit access off Pleasant, Pleasant Ridge Road.
Pleasant Run.
Or Pleasant Run.
Okay, so what they are proposing is to have it gated, right? So it's the intent, what was expressed during the Planning Commission meeting is that would be, that entrance would be available from nine to five, and that after, it would be then closed at that point. There will be, you know, the reader gates that will allow people for the mini warehouse, if you want to come in and have access with the gate. So you'd punch in a code that would allow you to have access. That that would be allowed only on the eleven four sixty side.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peters, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson. Is there?
Yeah, if you'd see her, if you could hear from them.
Thank you very much. Petitioner, I'd like to come forward, introduce yourself.
David Goodman, three two four three West Ridge Road, southwest Roanoke.
Hey, my name is Andrew Lumston. I'm with Lumston Associates. So I've been helping Mr. Goodman here with the layout and planning.
So do you want to tell us about the project?
Yeah, I would like to maybe just briefly address some of the concerns that citizens had last, the last meeting. One has already been brought up with the traffic issues. I mentioned that I'll have at peak hour, or peak days, three to six comings and goings, pickups and deliveries during the day. And the volume on Pleasant Run, according to VDOT, is like 430 cars a day. And on 460, there's 15,000 vehicles per day. And I do not plan to use the entrance on Pleasant Run as my primary entrance. 90% of the coming and going at Panda Storage runs would be on 460, because like Philip mentioned, it's a, it's a code to get in and out. The entrance on Pleasant Run Road will be gated, but just with a padlock. So I would only have the key to that.
So Pleasant Run exit would have a padlock, and you would be the key holder to that?
Yes. And it would only be open if needed between 9:00 and 5:00 during those business hours.
And can you help, help us understand the, the need for that rear exit?
Well, it's not a primary entrance, but I would love to have it. Next door, Boone Tractor has an entrance to their back property, and I don't know what kind of traffic they cause on Pleasant Run Road. But I can assure you that I do not, probably, in my estimate, 90% of the traffic will be coming through 460. So, and then another thing is that that property has been zoned C2 for 30-plus years, and many other companies possibly could have come into that property with much higher traffic volume without having to go through an order, an ordinance like I'm going through to get an exception. So this may be a blessing to the citizens, but they may not see it that way. But Andrew, could you touch on the drainage and some of the noise concerns that they, they had the last meeting?
Yeah, there were some noise, potential noise complaints, or concerns over noise. And we just thought it'd be worth mentioning that typical operations would be 9:00 to 5:00. So that's, that, that would be the, the primary generator of noise. So with the county's noise ordinance that's in place, I believe 10 o'clock is the cutoff where loud, you know, loud noises would be prohibited. Since the majority of the business would be done during business hours, I don't see that being a concern. Just thought we'd mention that. And as far as drainage and stormwater management, there, there is a large, it's not that large, it's kind of a broad drainage swale that runs from, from the west to the east. And we are planning on picking up that drainage, running it through our stormwater management facility so that we can mitigate flows from post-development back to pre-development rates. I just thought we should mention that before the board.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Goodman, you're operating the operation?
My wife and I are sold, we're a corporation. It's owned by my wife and myself.
Do you have other facilities?
Uh, no, just rental property.
So, so would you be in the shop office, you or your wife be in the shop office building 9:00 to 5:00 generally?
Probably not my wife. She's a more of a silent partner.
Okay.
But I would, you mentioned Krauss, those are the people that own the property. Danny Krauss is who I've been working with, and we may have had some instances with their company in the past, but not, I don't think Panda Storage Rentals. I've been in business for five years, and I currently rent some property on Cook Drive in Salem.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Eifert?
I know the applicant, Mr. Goodman and his wife, and they're good people. We're not going to have a problem with them.
Thank you. Thank you. If you want to stay near, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Let's see. And before I call up any speakers, I would just like to thank you, stay close. I'd like to open up the public hearing and just remind anyone that comes forward to speak that you have three minutes to speak, and I appreciate it if you would stick by the lights as they are shown. When they're green, you have three minutes. The yellow means, I believe you have one minute remaining, and then red means please wrap up your comments. So the first person I have signed up to speak is James Weeks. If you would please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Weeks. I live at 5938 Viewpoint Avenue. I've been there for over 28 years, and I am stringently opposed to the location of the Panda Storage facility at the land in Glenver. However, experience has shown me that this is probably something that we're going to have to accept, that you've probably already made up your mind to approve this zoning request. But yet, no one in the area wants it. I personally went around to 80 residents in the area and have 67 signatures on a petition in opposition to this project. The 13 other people I contacted were basically apathetic. They had nothing to say one way or another. They didn't care. But under the circumstances and given the conditions, I'm willing to accept whatever decision the board makes, but I'm also saying that I'm resigned to that fact. And in doing so, I'd like for you to consider at least one modification to the, the site development plan. Eliminate the Pleasant Run entrance. It's superfluous. It's not necessary. There are 350 feet of frontage on the property on the 46011 size, which would be more than able to accommodate two entrances. In doing so, you're going to eliminate the safety issue, which I'll get to in a minute. And the second thing is the degradation of the road that's already a poor surface. And I challenge the Planning Commission's figures to about 800 cars on that road a day. I've lived there almost 30 years, and if I see a car on that road, it's surprising to me. And I have a farm there, and I'm there every day. So if you eliminate the entrance, it cuts down the traffic, it helps from degrading the road any further than what it is. And if any of you have ever been out to that area, it's a nightmare to get off of Pleasant Run onto 460, turning left towards Dixie Caverns between 3:00 and 5:00 in the afternoon. And if the chief of police were here, I'd tell him, put more officers out there, because I've been there and seen three accidents at Pleasant Run, right there on the south entrance. No one was killed, but it was serious injuries. So my point is, I'll accept the Panda Storage facility there, but please get rid of the safety issue with the tractor trailers, because they're 53-foot long, they're hard to maneuver, and it's a nightmare to get them on traffic. And in closing, I'd just simply say that it's become an issue for me that this is not a situation of if an accident is going to occur, especially on Dixie Caverns. It's going to happen. And when it does, I can only hope and pray that there's no fatalities. But I will tell you, and I'll look you straight in the eye, the blood of the injured people are going to be on your hands, because this is a time that you can rectify the situation and fix it by either eliminating the Pleasant Run entrance or just denying the zoning request altogether.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weeks. The next speaker is Dee Connor. If you'd come forward, state your name and address, please.
Okay, Dee Connor, 5925 Viewpoint Avenue. I'm going to start out with, what is a nuisance lawsuit? When a business enterprise, even though lawful, becomes obnoxious to occupants of neighborhood dwellings and renders the enjoyment of structures uncomfortable? What is the definition of bias? Prejudice and favor or against one thing, person, or group compared with another, usually in a way considered unfair? Nuisance. Panda Storage, one owner, one employee wants to locate backside Pleasant Run. We have 93 houses there. We are going to have 25 new houses built, and there's no less than 200 cars that have no way to exit their property but Pleasant Run. Now, they exit onto 55 mile-an-hour traffic. Also, Boone and Tractor uses the back gates to Pleasant Run, and they use them all the time. Just yesterday, they were wide open again. The video did not really show the area very well at all, because you can throw a rock where the bus stop is into the middle part of Pleasant Run, I mean Pleasant Run, where Panda Storage is going to be. In other words, we have houses and a bus stop directly across from the location of Panda Storage onto Pleasant Run again. So in other words, right in the middle of our neighborhood, right in the middle, the front of the entire neighborhood will be Panda Storage. Two residents who have built new houses right next to Panda have already stated this company will affect their livelihood, their jobs, because they need to sleep. How can anyone be quiet moving into storage buildings with U-Hauls or moving trailers, campers, or boats, et cetera? We'll have all kinds of problems with noise, lighting, safety, dirt, and traffic, and all of our properties are going to go down immediately. And yet, Panda will reap benefits to people while offering absolutely nothing to our neighborhood. Bias. The meeting should have been for the people, not at 3:00 in the afternoon when everybody's working. Also, I have three minutes, I'm 70 years old, paid property taxes for 50 years, I have three minutes to defend my property. And also, why are these intrusive companies able to locate in less wealthy areas? The Planning Commission must think our neighborhood doesn't count, or they would have never sent this through. I have serious questions whether they even drove the property. And the reason I say this is because somebody from the committee actually said, I'm familiar with that area, and someone else said, yes, there are a few houses here. Glenver is a beautiful area, but it's filled with numerous industrial eyesores. Please try and help us. Panda needs to locate in an area that doesn't affect so many residents in such negative ways.
Thank you very much. Next is Shirley Trumbull-Chittam. Welcome.
Hi, y'all.
If you would please state your name and address.
Shirley Trumbull-Chittam, 5872 Viewpoint Avenue. I'm starting with a letter I sent to the Board of Supervisor dated 8th February of 2022, where I questioned the rationale of putting facilities in our neighborhoods in West County that are not being supported by additional infrastructure, Lowe's Distribution Center, particularly the lack of safety provisions, places to shop, eat, bank, or conduct any kind of personal business. Not one supervisor responded to my communication. Pertaining to Panda Storage and Rental space, special use application, I gave many concerns about neighborhood drivers and school bus safety, appropriate placement of these facilities and industrial parks, the already existing runoff problem, and the lack of substructure to support heavy vehicles, the lack of buffer zone on Pleasant Run Drive, lighting, noise concerns to the Planning Commission that were all dismissed as non-consequential. It was also very disheartening to hear two of the members of the Planning Commission show personal bias for the project by asking questions of the applicant that would support their personal construction business. It was inappropriate and sent a message to us that this was a done deal to support the business interest of people that do not live here, especially one that creates zero jobs for anyone in the area but a disruption to those who reside there, which is a flip-flop on your philosophy of job creation. This was a time of citizen input, not doing business from the bench. Another question I have is of compliance. Compliance by neighboring Boone Tractor, often referenced in this report, has been sketchy at best. According to Bill Richardson, county planner I contacted about a year's ago, it was a requirement in the first reading that they have opaque fencing, but left it up to the second reading, so they don't have to comply. Hmm. In the record and Planning Commission meeting in this agenda, there's a discrepancy in what we agreed upon. There was no mention to the upgrades of the buffer zone on Pleasant Run Drive as we agreed upon, and there was no reference, as agreed upon, until his presentation that the back gate would only be used by him. The applicant's pictures were queued, or skewed, and not current at all. Was there ever a need study done for this type of facility in our neighborhood? It was noted in the Greenway Development Study in VDOT's comments that this section of 460 would be a passageway to Green Hill Park and beyond. Once again, you're missing the opportunity to spice up this drab, kind of ugly, representation of Roanoke County that gets a lot of exposure from out-of-town travelers when frequently forced off 81. This plot would be better utilized as a safe picnic respite area from 81, a parking place for the Greenway, a walking track, hey, a pickleball court, something for us to do out there. There's nothing for us to do. It's kind of ironic that property assessments coming out today? Have you already put our neighborhood on the list for reassessments? If this is passed, as a lot of homeowners are of retirement age and need to know the true value of their most important investment and tax fairly? Or should we wait until we know what else is in store for West County soon and fast, as Mr. Henderson slyly alluded to? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry. Next is Lloyd Statzer.
My name's Lloyd Statzer. I live at 5959 Viewpoint Avenue. I'm 71 years old. I've lived in this community almost, almost all my life, except for 10 years after I got married, and then I come back and built my home in 78, 79. When I built my home, there was, there was 15 homes on Viewpoint. There was 13 homes older than mine. This is a well-established, quiet, friendly neighborhood. We don't feel that Panda fits into our neighborhood. The zoning, I know is owned for industrial, but if you'll look on the prints, the house directly in front of, and you can see it in the pictures I gave you, is completely surrounded with a fence. That house is over 60 years old and has been residential. The house directly to the right, which don't show in the pictures, has been there over 60 years. The houses directly in front of, across the road have been there 70 years. So you can see we're well-established, we're a quiet community. I sort of figure with the zoning committee approving this, that the board's going to approve this in it. But I'm asking for three restrictions. The first one, no gate they put on, on Pleasant Run. There's, there's six houses on, on Scenic Drive, there's over 50 houses in Broadview, which is a closer end of Pleasant Run, but everybody that gets on the interstate travels the full distance of Pleasant Run. There's 15 houses on Viewpoint Avenue or excess Viewpoint Avenue, and there's 25 U-Hauls to be built in a subdivision directly across from this. Now, if you'll notice in the pictures of Boone, I know this has no bearing on Boone, but I want you to look at the pictures. Up until recently, they only came halfway down that hill. It wasn't noticeable from the road. I mean, you could turn your head and look at it, but now it's right up against the road. It's an eyesore, it looks like a junkyard. I'm, my problem is, I'm afraid this Panda is just going to add to it. It's going to look like we live in an industrial center. I mean, how would you like for your family or friends to come to your home and feel like they're driving through an industrial center? It's, I just, we, and we, like I say, the road, we've had experience with them building this subdivision with tractor trailers carrying equipment. There's not room enough. The tractor trailer people think their half is in the middle. There's been several times that I've had to pull over in the grass to let them get by. Not long ago, I was headed from Dixie Caverns going east. 55 mile-an-hour speed limit, paper run 70. I had to stop completely in the road to make a right-hand turn because the truck was sitting there in the entrance, blocking the entrance to Pleasant Run. We don't need that. We don't need that. There's going to be an accident happen. Last spring, on the other end of Pleasant Run, I was backhanded waiting to turn across the road. My truck was in shop over a month, over $12,000 worth of damage. Just luckily, no one was hurt. So we don't need any of this extra on Pleasant Run. My second that I want to make is there's nothing set for the planting of the front border. If you look at the picture I show you with coming down Pleasant Run, you can see the field. When we come down that road, if Panda comes in, we're not going to see anything except containers. I'm asking that the full line, full frontage on Front Avenue be covered with trees tall enough to block this. They say their containers are eight feet tall. Well, once you stack one, they ask for a limit, that's 16 feet tall. That's something we're riding down the road looking directly into. The houses across the road, it's nothing but storage buildings. So I'm asking for they're be set that the trees are high enough to block the view of it. Not only will it block the sight of it, it'll block the sound because the sound comes up on our hill. And the third thing, it'll keep down on the dust in our community. And last, I don't know if you know the board knows, but in the late '70s, they had a planting place 100 yards catty-cornered where this is at. That planting place came in under our grandfather's cause. Within two years, they completely destroyed the water table in our community. Cyanide was found in the wells, not just a little, but it was enough to where the people could smell it and actually turn the wells brown. This went as far as across 460 on the other side. They had to bring a super fund in, federal government to clean up the area. Not only that, the wells were condemned. We have wells in our yards we can't use. We had to hook on public water. That's a bill that we have to pay every month that we shouldn't have had to pay. They completely destroyed it. They had to come back in and redo everything. Okay, my third restriction is I'm asking for no explosives, flammable, or toxic materials to be stored on this property. We've already had enough damage in our neighborhood. I'm asking you, please give us some protection. I mean, we don't deserve to drive down the road and see what we're seeing at Boones now with another one like this. We need that barrier. I appreciate you listening to this.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Statzer. So I believe that was the last, that was the last speaker I had, Madam Clerk, no more. So at this time, I'll close the public comments, and I would like to hear back from my fellow board members if you have any additional questions of the petitioner or of staff. Now is the time to ask those questions. Any comments or questions from fellow supervisors? Yes, Mr. Rafford.
It's either for the petitioner or for Mr. Thompson. Do these residents, do these citizens know about the buffer? Has that been explained to them? I mean, we're not going to have, from what I'm reading and hearing, we're not going to have the site that you have behind Boone equipment.
So, from what I understand from the last gentleman, part of it's orientation, right? Where they're coming from, driving down the road. The way I understand it is the property, this property is higher at 11460 and slopes down towards Pleasant Run. So they're coming down the road, coming towards Pleasant Run, and therefore they're looking up at that hill. That's the way I understand what he was saying. So what they're saying is, so the buffer, so there's three buffers, right? The frontage on 11460, the frontage on Pleasant Run, there's just a 10-foot buffer required with certain plantings. It's not going to really probably hide but so much. But there will be a fence, I imagine it's a chain link fence, around the property. The buffer is really along the western propylene because it's between the two zoning districts, between C2 and R1. So about 2/3 of that western propylene is probably, would have that, again, either 40-foot buffer or 30-foot buffer. I think the concern-
Could we put that back on the screen where you had that on the report?
Right, so there's, you know, six-foot screening, you know, it's typically a board-on-board fence, or in this case, they're using a chain link fence. It might be the slats that create some type of barrier. And then there's a certain amount of planting that happens within every 100 feet. So within that 100 by 30 area, there'd be, you know, three deciduous trees, large evergreen shrubs, and deciduous shrubs as well in addition to the screening. What I think they're saying is that the plantings, either on the western side, indefinitely within probably the 10-foot, is which the one that they're probably more concerned about is the one on Pleasant Run Drive, is that even a 10-foot buffer with that planting, them looking up at it, they're going to be looking at those storage containers, especially if they're stacked on top of each other, that it's going to take a long time for anything to really block that out. So I think what they're saying is, or their concern, or the concern that I heard from them, is they would like to have a more beefed-up buffer, taller trees, maybe, I don't know, width-wise, would that matter? But that's kind of what I thought I heard this gentleman talking about. Obviously, they talked about the access off of Pleasant Run Drive as well. And again, we mentioned this to the planning commission, imagine to you as well. You have the, as part of the process, you can put conditions on the approval that could deal with impacts. It's up to you. So if you want taller trees, you want to eliminate the access, that's all possible as part of the special use process.
Thank you. That answered your question.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from board members?
Just one, Philip.
Could you move it to the picture, to the site plan? Move the slide to the site plan, please.
And going back to the staff report, just my clarification for, I guess it's on page 51 of our agenda, there are certain general standards for many warehouses, and I think under prohibited uses under 6E, storage of flammable, highly combustible, explosive, or hazardous materials are prohibited.
Correct.
So I'm hoping that would address the last citizen's comment. Thank you.
One of the three.
One of the three, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Peters?
Yeah, so there's only a 10-foot buffer on the backside of the property.
Correct.
Okay. So when we were referring to the 30-foot a minute ago, we're only talking about that one side.
That's correct.
Correct.
So, I mean, I'll just be open with my board, you know, given the concerns I've heard. I cannot support if it continues with the access to Pleasant Run. And I think that, you know, given, again, the concerns, we may need to evaluate a greater buffer on the back end.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think even with the larger buffer, the whole issue of the lay of the land, they're still going to be seeing some of this property, and it's unfortunate that an existing neighbor has raised enough concerns with their use of their facility and their grounds that there's concern, and I believe valid, valid concern. So thank you. Thank you for that. Any other comment, question? Yes, Mr. North?
Yeah, I think it's, doesn't sound like that back entrance is going to be used that much anyway, so I don't think we should allow that to continue. That it seemed to be a big concern of the citizens I've heard. And I definitely think that you're going to need some taller trees, but there's one thing that wasn't mentioned, I'll just throw this out here for other board members, perhaps some fencing, the fencing on that side that we're talking about putting the buffer, I don't know whether putting slats in some of the fence line would, that way you don't see through the fence, and therefore you don't see the containers as much. That might be-
So you're saying it could be a chain link, but have the vinyl pieces that go through it to create a barrier, a visual barrier?
They're used around accounting bowl fields and other ways to address concerns from residents. I know it might be a little more costly, but I think it's a consideration. But I definitely think you need some higher trees. They grow faster. Six-foot angle cut it.
Okay. Any other comments from this board? Thank you. I'd like to speak with the petitioner if I could. I would like to say that some of this is coming from the fact that their existing, your existing potential neighbor is causing some of this trepidation, and they don't know you, and they don't know what you will do or won't do, and it's unfortunate. But I wanted to just ask a couple of questions if we could. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry to make you or ask you to go back to it, but I was hoping to go back to that site plan again, please. And there's a notation on the front of the property where it says that there is room for a, in the right-of-way planting. So there was some conversation about the greenway potential, and was wondering if any of that was taken into consideration in the lay of the site plan.
There should be plenty of room for the greenway to come through there. I mean, you can see how far offset from the edge of pavement the right-of-way extends before beginning the property.
Okay.
So there's, it looks like there's maybe 60 feet between Route 460 and the start of the property.
Okay, good. I have a couple of other questions, and I know that this is a special use permit and that we can impose conditions, but I wanted to have some conversation going in. As you can tell, that there's a lot of concern about the height of the trees not really adequately working as a buffer. And so taller trees, I would just like to hear you all speak to that point and what your thoughts are there.
I live in South Roanoke, and there's a power line behind my house. And we built the house in 2002, and I planted evergreen trees, six-foot evergreen trees. Now they're well above the power lines. They grow more than a foot a year. If you fertilize them, they'll grow two foot a year or more. The ordinance for C2 for the maximum height is 45 feet, I believe. I have agreed to only stack the containers too high. So in the future, that may be a drawback to my business, but I'm agreeing to do that. If a hospital is owned C2, came in here and wanted to buy this property, they wouldn't need to get an exception properly. They would need a rear entrance to get in there. So why would you take away a rear entrance for someone like myself if you would give it to somebody else that didn't need an exception? That's my point.
I hear you. So I appreciate it. Y'all can have a seat now, and I'm going to open up the discussion among my board members, and I'm going to just tell you what I'm thinking about doing, and I'd love to hear your comments. And the motion, as it was given to us as a potential for the conditions, excuse me, the conditions that are proposed are the special use permit for equipment sales and rentals, and, let's see, it says site plan and onsite storage containers can only be stacked too high, not to exceed 20 feet. And, let's see, the date of October 19th for the comprehensive site plan review process. So I am, if this is, were approved, I'd be looking at no rear ingress or egress. It's a residential street, and I think that the type of equipment that will be going on that road is not appropriate. And I'm also interested in taller trees. I believe it's six feet now that's required, Mr. Thompson, and so, you know, what's a reasonable height for a tree that can be planted and live in that transplant process? And David, I know that you're probably an expert in that area, is 10 reasonable 10-foot trees planted in that buffer in the rear?
Leavon cypress grow so fast, they become a weed. They are huge, enormous trees.
So you're saying if it were six feet, it would grow quickly enough to-
Oh, yeah.
I also liked the idea of increasing the buffer yard to 30 feet on the backside of the property also, because that's where a lot of mitigation needs to take place for the neighbors across the street. And because this is a special use permit, we're able to lay conditions on there. Do I have any other comments from any of my other board members before I go forward with the motion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
It's either for Mr. Thompson or for our attorney. So if one of these permitted uses came on, post office, public assembly, general office, medical office, laboratories, Philip, can they by right exit on the Pleasant Run Drive?
Well, obviously, they would have to get the permit through VDOT, but it would just go through the VDOT process. It would be, and I would imagine they would get access if they made the claim. So if there's a by right C2 use-
Yeah.
-that was going to locate on this property, yes, they probably would get access off of both, I would imagine.
But they would have to get approval through VDOT.
Yes, they would have to go through VDOT for that approval process.
So we could do, they would have it by right if you had a motel, hotel, you could do funeral services, pawn shop, a restaurant, retail sales. There's a lot that somebody could do permitted uses that can go ahead and use with a permit, go right through Pleasant Run Drive, and there would be no hearing here.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I would just allow to comment on what Mr. Rafford said, that they may be permitted by right, but I think the concern that I'm hearing voiced and that I have is this is going to be more of larger truck traffic. That, and apparently this road is not in the best of conditions, right, in containers. You know, this is a residential road, and I don't think that it would take long to destroy that road, and who knows how long they speed up to get anything fixed. So that was my concern about that rear entrance. I mean, because I only flip it around, I know he brought up a hospital. Well, let's say one of the standalone ERs for Lewis Gale were to go in there. Well, you know, they're probably not going to use that rear entrance themselves. They're going, you know, if it's customary of what they've built in Bonsac, they're going to access to 460 or wherever it's allowed by VDOT. But again, it's going to be car traffic. It wouldn't be heavily used. I guess that was my concern.
And I appreciate your commentary, Mr. Rafford, because I understand that there are other things that can go in there, but this is a special use permit for a reason. It's so that we can have this discussion, and we certainly don't want to make it impossible for them to do business. But I think, you know, my concern is I want them to be able to do business. I also want to be good to these residents. I also want to, you know, mitigate these concerns as best we can. Mr. North?
Yeah. It's certainly been a dynamic discussion. We all know that there's limited funds for roads, especially secondary roads like this. People keep coming up to me asking when we're going to get our road and our subdivision paved again. It's been open now, going on almost 30 years. It's on the list. It's on the list, just like this one's on the list. It's on the list. And so, you know, additional truck traffic is problematic at best, and so to the point of Lewis Gale and their clinic on 460 is one way in, one way out, maybe that was because of the lot configuration, but that works, so. And I hear what you're saying, if it was something else, that's different, but I think here, we've heard the citizens, and I think there's room to compromise.
Agreed. And Mr. Thompson?
No. Any more questions?
He wants to know if he can sit down. Any other questions?
I've heard the citizens, and I agree with the concern- I, I've heard the citizens and I, I agree with the concerns expressed with respect to utilizing large trucks delivering containers on Pleasant Run Drive. But I guess, I hear that and at the same time, I guess I am concerned that in so many other situations, we, we try to encourage or we want to have multiple accesses to a, to a piece of property or to a use or to a facility, if nothing else, for an emergency use. If there's a blockage out on the main road, don't you want to have an alternative use or an alternative access point? I, I thought, and I can't recall the specific situation, but I thought at one time we had a condition where we limited a use like solely for emergency access. And I don't know how.
Schools have it.
I know for schools, I don't know how, isn't there a certain, not a key, but it's?
The knock box.
Is that what?
But that's on the building, access the buildings.
Oh, okay.
And I know that one of the citizens brought up having two entrances on 460 because there's enough room there. I mean, that's, that's, that'd be another option, but.
The other concern is, to me, that 10-foot strip that runs along Pleasant Run Drive, Madam Chairman, you, you've raised the point of maybe expanding that. The concern I would have is, would that adversely impact the proposed stormwater facility? I, I would not want to intrude on that. It, it seems to me the primary concern is more a visual barrier.
It is.
So whether it's 10 feet wide or 30 feet wide, it could be 10 feet wide as long as there are, whether Leyland cypresses or evergreens or whatever grows more rapidly, they could be planted in a 10-foot strip. I just wouldn't want to adversely affect the, the stormwater facility location. From listening to the gentleman from Lumston, that, that appears to be the, the preferred location based upon topography of where you would put a stormwater facility. And I think one of the citizens did make some comments with respect to stormwater problems. So, so that seems to be a good solution to that aspect of the problem. So expanding by 30 feet, would that, what kind of impact would that have on the stormwater facility?
It could still work. We just may shift everything internal.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. To me, it was more the height of the, the visual barrier, not so much the width or the depth of the, of the, of the planting strip.
Well, I mean, I guess when we, we evaluate the entrances, we have our illustrious Chief of Fire and Rescue with us, who could probably weigh in on whether it's beneficial to have an access in the rear of the property. Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief.
But he, but he just did.
But I just did.
So, I mean, really, on a property like that, you know, our main weigh-in's going to be 460. Our trucks aren't going to use Pleasant Run. I mean, that would be an absolute last resort. In regards to, you mentioned knock boxes. While primarily knock boxes are put on buildings, you can use them for gates. Camp Roanoke is a perfect example. The gate to Camp Roanoke has a knock box. So if the gate was locked, or in this instance, the padlock on the gate was locked, if a knock box was back there, you could access it for emergencies if, if that was needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the other concern I have about having the entrance in the, in the rear is that it takes away part of that buffer in between the residence and the, and the facility. So if there's no other comments, I'm ready to move forward with the motion and then if we need to discuss further, we, we can. Let's see. I find that the proposed special use permits meet the requirements of Section 30191 of the Roanoke County Code and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance are in substantial conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan and will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. With that being said, Mr. Lubeck, I see that these are two special use permits and I'm going to have one motion. Is that?
Very good, absolutely.
Okay. So I have several conditions. I therefore move that we approve the petition to obtain special use permits for both equipment sales and rentals and mini warehouse with the following conditions. Number one, as to the special use permit for equipment and rentals, the site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan prepared by Lumston Associates PC dated October 19, 2020, subject to any changes required during the comprehensive site plan review process. Number two, as to the special use permit for equipment sales and rentals, onsite storage containers shall not be stacked more than two containers high and shall not exceed 20 feet in height. Number three, as to the special use permit for mini warehouse use, the site shall be developed in general conformance with a concept plan prepared for Lumston Associates PC dated October 19, 2022, subject to any changes required during the comprehensive site plan review process. And then two additional conditions, no ingress or egress onto the residential street, peaceful run. And then finally, number five, a 30-foot buffer on the back side, let's see, would be the south side of the property with Leyland cypress used as the evergreen tree. Are there any questions about my intent on these conditions or any concerns that need to be discussed?
Sounds, sounds good to me.
Okay. No questions? Yes.
Just clarification.
Okay.
I think you said peaceful drive. I think you meant Pleasant Run Drive.
I did. Thank you.
So.
Appreciate that. That would have been problematic. Thank you.
And I understand the 30-foot buffer along the back and Leyland cypress. My one question would be on the existing buffer that's required along the western property line, were you doing, did you intend to have that as well with evergreen trees or not?
Thank you.
That was my question.
Thank you. And I, it would be my intent to have the same buffer on the western side of the property, as you can see on the site plan, on the western side that is adjacent to residential, the same as the backside of, of this, of this property. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Do you want to have a second? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Peters? Made it hard on you.
You did, thanks.
You want to pass and thank?
Yeah, I'll pass.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion passes, the petition was approved and we'll move on to our next item on the agenda.
Madam Chair, do you think we can have just about a three-minute break?
Sure. There's a request for a three-minute, a three-minute recess and we'll come back in three minutes. It'll be five, let's say 5:15, five minutes.[1126.75]